All right, welcome and good morning. I'm John Hochheimer, President of National Association of Rocketry. And I want to welcome you to our State of the NAR presentation Town Hall for the Virtual NarCon. A couple housekeeping things up front and then I'll start sharing some slides. The chat room is open for you all to chat amongst yourselves and I will be monitoring the Q and A tab and answer questions as best I can after I do my presentation. With that, let me share my screen. Okay, so again, welcome and first thing I want to do is just give out a whole bunch of thank yous. First of all, thank you to all the participants. All of you who are participating in our Virtual NarCon for 2022, I think it's been a great success. We've exceeded 500 participants. One quick update for you as a bonus to you, you know, you can go back and look at the all these presentations on your own time. It's going to be exclusive to paid participants for 90 days and then after the 90 days we'll upload things to YouTube. So you have an exclusive 90 day view of the all these presentations. So you can go back and look at, look at me for the next 90 days. Just kidding. I'm here. Everybody's telling me we got to give a shout out to Todd. Happy birthday, Todd. Next, I want to thank all the presenters. We've had a number of just awesome presentations. People have spent a lot of time getting ready for it. The manufacturers spent a lot of time getting ready and showing us some really awesome stuff. And thanks to all the volunteers who have made NarCon possible. Thanks goes out to Will Marchant. Will stepped in Friday night with a quick solution to the technology problem we had with the manufacturers forum. And I don't think we'd have been as successful Friday without Will. So thanks again, Will. Thanks go out to Ed La Croix and Todd Schwim. Ed and Todd have spent just countless hours getting this ready in prep for this just before I went on. Todd and I were talking and I know I'm tired of looking at a screen for the last two and a half days and poor Todd's got another full day of it. So, you know, again, these guys did just a great job and, you know, our event wouldn't be anything close to where it is without them. We're taking lots of notes and we're going to improve things for next year. Thanks goes out to our keynote presenters, Jenna and Andrew. I enjoyed the presentations and am really looking forward to chatting with you offline and in the future. I think there's a lot of things that and a lot of energy that you bring to the hobby and we need to talk about it and see what we can do jointly to capture some of that energy and help us as an organization. And thanks to John Langford and all of Estes for the presentation last night. I know everybody was captivated. I certainly was and it's just refreshing that we've gotten so much additional support in the hobby through Estes lately. All right. All right, I would be remiss if we didn't start out with a safety minute. And you know what? I know I repeat myself a lot here when I do these town halls and I repeat myself a lot when in the newsletter, but the two things that are the biggest potential problems for us as a hobby are accidentally setting fires with our rocketry activity and rockets landing where they're not supposed to land. We must remain diligent, especially with respect to fire safety. Who would have thought that such a devastating fire could have happened in Boulder, Colorado on December 30th of the year? It's winter time out there. It's not supposed to be fire season. And we really, really have to be diligent about this and our hobby and us as an organization can't be associated with or set a fire that causes that kind of devastation. So we have to be extremely careful, look at the weather. If things just aren't right and it looks like a fire danger, don't launch that day. And for those of you that in sections that launch in areas that are higher fire danger, reach out to your local fire departments and just get them to help you with a an informal training session on what you should do and how to help them help you in the event that something minor happens and that'll help you to keep it from becoming something major. Launch angles is another thing, you know, we can't have rockets coming in, especially big rockets coming in where they're not intended. You know, certainly there are things out of our control, but setting launch angles to account for wind direction and drift is extremely, extremely important. It's okay to stop a launch, to take an assessment of things and slightly change the launch angles to accommodate for a safer landing area. Oftentimes people say, well, you know, the wind's blowing directly at the audience. What do we do? And although the participants, we can't do anything because this is where we're set up and this is where we have to set up. I would argue there are things you can do. You can angle them in such a direction that it takes it at an angle to where you're launching so that it misses the crowd and gives you a safer landing area. So just take a look at things and do it. You know, one of the big things and the benefits that we have as an organization and one of the things that's extremely important for us organizationally is having insurance that we can offer landowners and both as protection for them, but also that we carry insurance against mishaps. We're not going to be able to get insurance if we have a major, major claim. We're such a unique and niche kind of group that it's really hard to get the insurance carriers to understand what we do and that we are safe. We're fortunate that we have an awesome insurance broker, but if we do something wrong and screw up, it's going to create a big risk for insurance. I feel like a controller. I have all these things spread out on my desk. Anyways. Okay, so I'm not going to read the names, but here's our Nar officers and trustees. This is, this is your board. You've elected us and I'm very honored to serve with this great group of individuals. Everybody's dedicated. We pitch in, our meetings are very collegial and we have a good a good group of individuals who are working hard to help the organization. Something that's actually grown since I've become president of the organization and it's grown with the organization is our headquarters and our staff. We have two employees that are full-time staff. Marie Stump is our headquarters manager and Marie does an awesome job just keeping things straight. Poor Marie was starting to get overloaded this year with the big dramatic increase in members. So we brought on another person who's working for us part-time to support our headquarters operations. That new person, Myra Marquez, is getting up the speed. Myra's handling all of our high-power certifications and the paperwork and the process associated with that. And she's working really, really hard to streamline that process and get things out as quickly as possible to enable you as our flyers and members to get the cards quickly, to get your pins and to get all the paperwork organized. So Myra's doing an awesome job. Todd Schwim, we brought him on last year. He's our Director of Communications and Publishing. You all know Todd. He's been very instrumental again in this program and Todd's just doing some amazing things that are helping us organizationally. We also have John Bolden still as our webmaster. Todd's taking over a lot of his responsibilities, but John helps us out every now and then when we have some really tricky issues with our website. And Anne Heacock is our accountant and we've been working very closely with Anne to shore up a lot of our processes and set up some controls with respect to our accounting and how we're handling our finances. And I'm very happy to say, I think we're pretty much there. I mean, we have a couple tiny loose ends to finish up, but I feel confident now that within the next year, we could have an audit and we would pass that audit with flying colors. So we've done a lot to just ensure accountability and the transparency of the financial aspects of the organization. And let me. Okay, some quick statistics and some, some numbers for you. I, we have 8,500, actually I looked late last evening and we had 8509 members. The breakdown is, is as you see roughly 500 junior, roughly a thousand leader and the bulk of it is senior members and about 100 life members. High flower, high-power flyers. About 50% of our eligible members are flying high-power and here's the breakdown. Last year, this time it was 7,400 members. Okay, and I'm going to get into those numbers a little bit more in the next couple of slides, but we really did have a concern that this was going to be a downward trend at this time last year. But our membership really returned and rebounded well and we're continuing to grow and set pretty much every month now, we're setting a new high in our active membership numbers, which is just phenomenal. Again, high-power is very, very popular and another thing to mention is it's, this increases across all these age groups. We're not seeing big pushes in any one, especially we're not seeing big pushes in only senior members, but it is pretty much across the board. And we'd love to see more junior and leader members and get that more disproportionate to our senior members. And hopefully over the next year, we can continue to do things to move in that direction. I just wanted to spend just a few slides and a few minutes to go over the sort of a crude trends analysis that I looked at. That sort of drove some of the decisions that we made last year and it's really, really apparent that I think we made some really good decisions last year, but fiscal year 19, pre-COVID, we continued to have a steady increase in our membership. And this increase reflected the previous several years. It was just a gradual decrease or increase year over year. It's towards the end of the year, it started decreasing a little bit, but typically in November, December, we had had this kind of dip in our membership and then it would kind of flatten out and continue to rise. So year over year was a 400-member increase over FY19, so things didn't look too bad. Then kicks in FY20 and all of a sudden we took a big turn and we have a downward trend. And this started to cause concern and our downward trend over that 12 months was we lost 250 active members in our total count. And with this loss and this decrease and as we continue to have increases in some of our cost of operation, we're starting to get concerned. We did some things to to shore up our financial situation by doing a slight dues increase that helped us out financially and the projections were good that if this continued downward trend were to occur, that at least we should have some adequate finances to take care of it. Then lo and behold, you know, kicks over into 2021 and we did a sharp U-turn back upward. So we're 1,000 members higher in, in the past 12 months, year over year. And this continues to amaze me. You know, let's see, as a data analyst and a numbers person, I know better than to attribute the the success of this to what could be an obvious relationship, we raised our dues and our membership went up. So, you know, I'm fighting the urge of raising the dues again to get a another big increase in membership, but just kidding, but overall I think it's great. This reflects the fact that people want to get outside and do things. There's all kinds of activities associated with rocketry that are getting people interested in rocketry and our hobby is growing. We're strong and everything, like I said, I think is really trending in the right direction. So very, very positive things happening. Okay, I like to show this distribution in our membership each time I talk with you. And when I first joined, let's see if my pointer shows up. When I first joined the Nar, we didn't have this bump in the 15 to 25-year-old group. It was all like this and I like to to continue to remind people that I was always the average age of our Nar membership. And so every year I got older, the average age increased a year. Then some, some stuff happened, you know, TARC happened, Student Launch happened. People are getting just more interested in rocketry in this 15 to 25-year-old age group. We have a huge bimetal distribution now and a huge bump in that 15 to 25-year-old group as well as we continue to have something, a peak in the 60 to 65. So I'm in this, still in this second peak and it's going strong, but this is what really excites me, the peak at the bottom. Our mean age has pretty much steadily or stayed steady at about 46 years of age now, and that's held true for probably about the last seven or eight years. All right, let's talk about Nar sections. We have 228 sections. We have roughly 3,800 members who attribute their and indicate in our database that they're affiliated with the section. We continue to want to increase this member affiliation. Quite honestly, we don't know. We've tried a lot of things. We're not sure what we can do to keep pushing to increase this. Part of it may just be a reporting issue that people are affiliated with sections, but or and go launch with sections, but just aren't indicating to us that they're affiliated with them. I don't know, maybe this is just what it's always going to pan out to be, but we continue to think that as people flock to sections and become members of sections, that launching together is an important part of the camaraderie and the, one of the benefits of the hobby and of our association. As an organization, we continue to support our sections through our section grant program. Chuck Neff, I'll give a lot of shout-outs to Chuck. Chuck continues to do an awesome job. He really pushes to the sections that they're eligible for this $250 section grant every year. Last year we gave out about $16,000 in grants to almost 30% of our sections. Our goal is 80 sections. We're, we're close to meeting that goal. And quite honestly, if 85 or 90 sections apply for grants, we come up with the money to support the section. So if you're a member of a section and you're not taking advantage of this program, talk to Chuck. It's pretty much $250 of funding that can go to a section for almost anything worthwhile that you want to do. So there's a process we have set up. You apply for it and, and we get you the funds as quickly as possible. Again, shout out so much to, and so much appreciation to Chuck Neff. Chuck is, is just a fireball in terms of keeping our sections active and doing just so many different activities associated with our Nar sections and Chuck's doing an awesome job. And also a big shout out to Ed Chess, who helps us administer, administer our section grants program. Ed writes all the checks associated with the the section grants and that was one of the financial controls that we set up and put in place that helps us with our accountability and how we do our finances. The last thing I'm going to say on sections, and we've talked about this a lot before, it, it continues to be a big concern to me as the president, it's a concern to the board. John Langford talked about it last night and that's the whole issue of launch sites. You know, it's a critical problem and we recognize that as a problem and something that we need to be aware of. But it's, it's just something that as we can support you locally in the acquisition of launch sites and finding new launch sites, we're more than willing to. But it's not something we can do as a national as a board of nine members. Like me coming to your place in Springfield, Missouri to try to talk a landowner into getting you a section and allowing you or allowing your section to use their property is probably really not going to be that effective. Certainly we can give you information. Chuck's got a great package of information. He can help talk you through some good points to talk to the landowners, but this is something that needs to be done at the local level. You live in that community. They're going to relate to you. They're not going to relate to me living in Alexandria, Virginia. The other point that continues to come up with launch sites is every once in a while we get a big push for, there's a desire to have a national launch site. I'll be quite honest with the, the membership and to you all. I don't think it's a good business decision for us to enter into a single national launch site. Certainly we don't have the finances right now to, to support a national launch site. And I will continue to push the board to, to look at when we're asked to look at this concept of a national launch site that we look at the business case for doing it. And by that business case, I mean, you know, how much is it going to cost us for land? How much is it going to cost us to maintain the land? What's going to be the, the return on investment in terms of membership using the land? Is it just going to be that? I don't know, the X number of sections are within a 200-mile radius of this national launch site, use the site on a regular basis, but the majority of our members who live outside of that radius don't use it. And it's those kind of analyses that we really need to do to understand the concept of, of the Nar owning launch sites and supporting these national sites. So I'm, I'm certainly open to the idea. It's just, we need to think about how to manage it from a business perspective. All right, speaking of business, the, the Nar is a business. Our, our organization is and must operate as a business and we must make sound financial decisions and do things in a very businesslike way. There's certainly a lot of activities that we do that are related to requirements of being a business. We have a we have an accountant who is helping us with our accounting practices. We have to report annually to the IRS with our Form 990. We don't pay taxes, but we have to report our income and expenses. And our finances have to be open and, and transparent. And there's some other things that we have to do and that you as sections will have to do in the future. Very minimal, but it's just, we are a business and there's certain requirements associated with it. We offer benefits and services to our members in the hobby. So you're purchasing a Nar membership and that results in services and benefits that we provide you as, as members. And our, our primary revenue stream is our membership. Right, this year 65%, roughly, I think it's a little bit higher than that goes to or comes, of our income comes from our member dues. And trying to just say for my notes. Okay, so at $30 for members under the age of 25 or $70 for anybody older than, than 25 years of age, this is still, I think, quite the bargain. So and one last note on sort of this part of our business model. I mean, we as an organization feel very strongly that encouraging younger members to join and participate is an important part of our mission. And therefore we provide membership for less than 25-year-olds at below the cost of servicing that membership. All right. All right, let me talk a little bit more about business things. I, again, I can't emphasize enough that as a leadership, we have to think about the Nar as a business and operate as a business. Right now, last year, we were almost a three-quarters of a million dollar a year enterprise. All right, so our, our income last year was about $735,000. Again, we're a nonprofit. We have tax filing requirements. And I mentioned that sections may be required to do something. I'll dive a little bit deeper into that. So as a, as a, an organization recognized by the federal government, we have an employee identification number. So it's essentially the social security number for a business. And as a section of the Nar, you are part of the Nar. You are part of this umbrella organization, the National Association of Rocketry, and we can allow you to use our employee identification number for certain activities. If you've tried to get a bank account in the last, I'd say probably 10 to 15 years, that's one of the things that they ask you for is the, what's the employee identification number or social security number you're going to associate with this bank account? You can use the, the Nar's employee identification number to set up your bank account. Some landowners and some users or some like universities, for example, are requiring a section to provide an employee identification number as, as part of the, the process to, for a local section to use their property for in our activity. And so again, we can provide the employee identification number for, for your use. It turns out if you use that, we're going to need information back from your section once a year to augment the reporting that we have to do the IRS. So our 990 has to include just some pretty basic information. What's your, you know, revenue expenses and who, who are the officers of your local section? And that will help us be compliant with the, the IRS and the, the reporting that we have to do. So we're going to work with Chuck and the accountant to set up an easy to fill out spreadsheet to provide us with the information we need to include with the Form 990 when sections are using the employee identification number. All right, again, I, I mentioned it, but we are working towards an audit of our financial practices. And like I mentioned, I think we're really, really close to there. And the last thing I want to talk about, sort of big picture on finances is in terms of cash, this time last year I was sweating bullets on our cash flow and, and really worried about you know, how we're going to pay bills at some points based on some of the projections. But our current bank balance has really shored itself up. We're at about $250,000 in cash right now that's available to pay our bills. We're at a good, very solid position in terms of our cash position. So I'm losing a lot less sleep now over the ability of the Nar to pay us bills. Sorry. Okay. Let me, I just want to dive a little bit deeper into sort of how I think of the, the Nar as an organization and sort of what the Nar means, what I think the Nar means to you and what we provide you in terms of benefits and services. So you purchase a, a membership and you give us $70 a year. If you're a life member, you give us, I don't know what it is now. It's a graduated amount depending on how old you are, but you give us an amount of money and we provide you a number of things. We provide you insurance. We provide you a magazine that comes out six times a year and our magazine people do an awesome job. I'll talk about that in a minute. We give you a member guidebook. Actually, it's, it's converted ever. It's going to be electronic now. But it's something that we offer as a, a But it's something that that we offer as a a benefit only to our members. We we give you. Access to our our website for some member only content. You can pull up and download. All kinds of R and D reports. You can get all the back issues or magazines going back to way before I even knew the NAR was an organization. So there's lots and lots of content there and we're working very hard to to increase that content. You can get certified in high power flying. You can belong to a section and there are other things like competitions, national events and. Other activities that we do organizationally. I mentioned the member guidebook. I just want to give a shout out with respect to the to the member guidebook. It's. I think I'm hesitating, but I believe the last conversation that Todd and I had is our goal is to have it. Roll out the first of February. The twenty twenty two member guidebook is digital only. I've been looking frantically for an old copy of a an older version of the member guidebook, but it certainly wasn't even close to being two hundred ninety pages. These two hundred ninety pages are color. Todd has done just an awesome job pulling together. Some really, really cool content. To to put in this member guidebook and it's going to be a a living document. We can add to this now instead of. Worrying year to year, every time we have to publish the the guidebook. You know, how do we put together? I don't know, a hundred pages of of content that are only printed in black and white and. You know, really, I don't think give the members the the breadth of information that we have available. Now we can do it in in this electronic form and it's going to knock your socks off. I also want to give a big shout out to the reviewers who who worked with Todd to to really. Make this a A plus product. Mark Bundick, Will Marchant and Mark Wise spent. Ton of hours reviewing and and working with Todd to make sure that the content was right. You know, that the periods and commas are on the right places and I just want to again to thank Todd. This this is just an awesome thing that you put together. Alright. So the way I look at the the NAR as an organization and you know what you're purchasing with your NAR membership. Is that your your membership also results in benefits and services to others. That are associated with the hobby and for the betterment of the hobby. Right? So the NAR supports educational programs. And and we're going to make a big effort in the next. Over the next year to to several years of really taking a look at our educational program and figuring out are there things that we can do differently? And really, you know, make a difference, not be duplicative of of other educational programs and you know. What should the NAR education program look like and and what can we offer in terms of educational opportunities? You know, we're looking at developing relationships with NSTA. We're looking at, you know, what SCS is doing. AI double A has some funding. You know, there are all kinds of things out there. That the NAR may be able to tap into to create relationships and and create. The the kind of content and information that that's needed that we can fulfill uniquely that others can't. Part of your. Your funding goes to grants and scholarships for. For teachers and educational programs in the grants and scholarships for college students. That are. From NAR members and so we're very supportive of educational programs. We support STEM programs, TARC, the Student Launch Program, RLS. There are other programs that that we support. In in support of STEM. And and lastly, and certainly not least, we provide support and maintain the important safety codes. Which makes it possible to keep the hobby safe as well as to to make the things like insurance affordable. So so there's stuff that goes directly to you and then you're also providing benefits overall to the hobby. Alright. People like to know where we're spending money and what our our finances look like. So here's a fairly high level. Quick breakdown of. Our income and. Our dues and I'm hesitating because somehow sticking in my head that we made is three quarters of a million dollars, but. I'll true that up, but anyways. Oh, I know it's a financial. Sorry, I'm talking to myself. Anyways, so when I look at the major categories, if and this is FY. Twenty one income and now I know that the the seven hundred and thirty five thousand dollar number that I cited. Was what our projection is for FY twenty two. So anyways, in last year. Our numbers, our calendar year is is our fiscal year. So last year, here's the breakdown. Membership is again sixty seven percent. The next highest income source last year was a student lunch program at a hundred and eight thousand dollars. This was. Somewhat of an anomaly in that. With the student launch program, we actually got payment and invoice the NASA over the course of. Some from. FY. Twenty in in fiscal year twenty one. So some of it is just due to how we invoice NASA on this bump up. For seed launch programs. Donations were about forty one thousand dollars last year and then other miscellaneous. Pieces were in it at fourteen thousand dollars. One thing I wanted to mention here and be sure not to forget is we had a a very generous donation. This past year from Jay Apt, former board member astronaut, just a real friend of the NAR. Jay contributed twenty five thousand dollars last year and another twenty five thousand dollars this year. Towards a scholarship for students in science and engineering. And we're working very closely with Jay to to set that up and we're trying to set it up as a an endowment that gives us. A lot longer. Time period to to use the the funding of it and make it essentially self sufficient so we can fund scholarships in perpetuity. And. It's I want to also make it very important to note that. We've set this up in a restricted fund account so that that money can only be used for that purpose. And so we have the ability to do that and certainly others within the the rocketry community. If if you feel that something like education is extremely important and and you want to endow money towards the NAR. For a legacy like that, there's certainly something that we can set up and and work with you to set up. And then the last thing on sort of income piece is we've had a couple inquiries over the past year to two years. About people acquiring whether or not the NAR could take stock. As as a donation and we're setting up our ability to do that. The problem with. Doing stock as a small organization is just finding the right broker so that we're not killed in fees and that we don't. Pay monthly fees that greatly exceed the the amount of income we get from our stock transactions. So we're trying to locate the optimal broker to to help us deal with that. Alright, in terms of expenses. So our our FY twenty one expenses. Top four are. Headquarters operations at a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. That's about thirty two percent. Our magazine is about sixteen seventeen percent. Member services. The bulk of which is insurance is about twenty percent and then grants and scholarship rounded out at about fourteen percent. Then we have some other much smaller categories, but the the top four are really the drivers of our expenses. And for those of you that have very long term memories, certainly. Our headquarters operation costs have gone up over the past two years, or actually the past year. And our publishing costs have gone down and that represents the transition from Todd Schwim as a. To an employee of the NAR instead of a that we contract with Todd to do our publications. And so making that switch is what's representative of a big portion of of that. Expense change. Alright. So the board met on Friday and actually the board meets almost every month, the first Wednesday of the month. And the every other board meeting on our phone calls are open to anybody, any of our members who want to join. And then, you know, certainly our our major meetings at the the national events are open to people within the organization. And then those off. Those other alternate. Meeting dates are are closed meetings for us to discuss things that. Need to be held in a more closed session and we do daylight as much as possible from those those closed sessions. So. The I I mentioned all this to to say that, you know, we are as open as we can be. And I think by going to the monthly phone calls, we actually are increasing the ability of the membership to participate. And at least listen in on our board meetings. So it's out there for for people. We also publish as quickly as possible the minutes from these meetings. So I think we're we're really doing a good job of being as transparent as possible with all of our decisions at the board. So the board in in our meeting meetings since the last. State of the NAR that I did in July and and including the meeting that we had on Friday, we voted to continue to fund our NAR section grants. We were going to, we're going to continue to offer free recruitment memberships to sections and board members. We're going to support participation in the National Science Studies Association and we cleaned up some of our policy statements and. You know, what do I mean by that? The the policy thing is, for example. We had a policy that the of sections Yahoo group was the official. Communication mechanism for leadership in the NAR to the leadership in the sections. Well, Yahoo doesn't exist anymore. Chuck created a groups at NAR or groups dot NAR dot I O. Group interaction. Thing. What I want to say, a a way of communicating virtually with all our sections. We think that's working really, really well. And so. We changed the policy to to reflect that kind of thing. And there was a couple other just minor policy things that that we fixed. And they'll be in the the minutes. Okay, what else did we do? We. We talked about the the format of the digital magazine right now for when a. With sport rocketry comes out. For. The six months post issuance of a magazine, it stays in a lockdown format. And then after that six months, we open it up and put it into a regular PDF format that gives you a little bit more accessibility and you can download it, etc. We currently are using this flip book kind of format that. I don't know, we've heard some people don't like it. We're not getting the kind of. Use on the the magazine in the digital form. You know, certainly it just could be the fact that the bulk of the people who read the magazine. Prefer to read it as a in a paper copy and that's all fine, but we're going to try a different. Way of formatting and presenting the magazine for that six month period to to see if that. Sort of opens up opportunities in the use of the the digital form. We talked a lot about social media and our our need to. Sort of get in the game of of social media and certainly the the talk Friday night from Jenna and Andrew. I think speaks volumes to the ability of of social media to have a huge impact on a a group that that we're not currently. Tapping into. And so we're going to dedicate hard resources to finding. The right way and the ability to be much more. Out upfront and and participant in social media to to get. A group of individuals familiar with the NAR that that we're probably missing the way we're currently doing things. We drafted our budget and. We actually did a lot of the budget drafting and finalizing. The draft numbers at the board meeting. We're going to review it and talk to our accountant about it and then finalize it at our next board call. But we think it's a good solid budget for for the next, the remainder of FY twenty two. And then lastly, we had a brainstorm, a brainstorming session with the board members to just get a sense of. What are different board members thought and their perspectives on our our national events and. As I think organizationally on things that we spend large amounts of our funds on like national events. And that are big, can be and should be big draws for our membership. We want to continue to look at these national events and make sure we're doing things to attract the as much of the membership as possible. So we just did some round robin kind of discussions and brainstorming to get a sense from the board what. We think our national events should look like and we're going to continue to work on that and. Kind of evaluate things and see if we do need to make any changes associated with our national events to be. More attentive to what the the members need. Alright, so let's. I kept this list because it's always good news to talk about things like our like sport rocketry, but. I really don't think I had any bad news this time. I had like this time last year, we were sweating bullets and had to to raise our. Our dues, but anyways, our current membership, like I said, was it's already over eighty five hundred members. It's it continues just to amaze me. We we gain about a hundred members each month. And to address that, we were we're we've added staff. And we're continuing to do things to make that member service touch point with our in our headquarters, a good positive. Interaction. We have two hundred twenty eight sections. So we grown. In in our section count, our number of high power certifications continue to grow. It right now is a a twenty hour a week job for our our new headquarters person. Just to process all the high power certification things and it's a very, very important. Activity and thing for our membership. So that's why we're dedicating somebody to that. And as you all know, our our magazine continues to be just awesome. Tom Beach. Tom, you just do an awesome job. It it always. I I want to say it never ceases to amaze me. I'm I've grown to expect it. It's always just an awesome magazine each time. And. I I can report to you guys that my my two grandkids both have are NAR members and and get the the magazine. And both of them read it and actually the three year old sits down and reads it a little bit more than the seven year old now. So I mean, they're even giving you a big thumbs up. They do want a few more pictures of the NAR president in there, but we'll work with you on that. But overall, you know, great job, guys. And I think it it just is is awesome how how much you do for the the organization. To keep our magazine as excellent as it is. And I know these last two are pretty repetitive, but. Our priorities continue to be that we want to make flight safety as our organization's first and top priority. We think all forms of commercial sport rocketry are important and we want to support it. We want to increase our organization's diversity and size and and we we want to really take some hard looks at the diversity piece of it. We want to support and expand outreach and educational activities. Our members. Need and should expect full transparency and the opportunity to participate in the decisions of the organization. I think we do that and if there's things that people think we can do to make that better, just let us know. And and we continue to provide national support to our our local section. So these are our big priorities. And what can you do? Be safe. And what can you do? Be safe. Don't start fires. Don't wreck your rockets into people and crowds and and vehicles. Recruit new nar members, work with high power flyers and and competitors. Take your turn volunteering and help your section with the nar or help us out nationally if if you have something that that we need some help on. Do community outreach, talk to people, be um, you know, support the hobby of of rocketry that you love. Be safe, have fun, pay forward and and, you know, just be good citizens and stewards. That's all I have. All right. Now, if I remember correctly, so I'm gonna go into the Q and A. Okay, so first question, Bob Kaplow, similar to your age distribution, I'd like to see a graph of membership tenure. Are you bringing in and retaining members or is new member churn and burn? I will. Let me see what I can do on that. I'm sure with our database, I can do that. Anecdotally, Bob, I think I uh I I'll get some numbers in from this up, but anecdotally, I think um th- this isn't the right number, but if 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 our I I'm struggling to do the mental math. So if 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 our distribution of membership is equal across the twelve months, if I'm doing the mental math correctly, that that means roughly seven hundred members um are renewing each month. And I would say that our retention is probably at least half and probably a little bit more. But let me take a look at it and and I think we can um give you a little bit more solid answer on that. But but I um it's it's not as one and done as what I thought and what I observed sometimes in the past. From Gary Leck, can anyone contribute to the scholarship endowment fund? Yes. There's certainly, we can build on what Jay has started um and um and increase that. And um we'd love to to build that fund. From Russell Parrish, can you speak about what nar is doing to promote the hobby outside of current membership, social media, advertising, etc.? Let's see. So I think we do lots of things. So so sorry, wait a minute. All right. So in terms of social media, I think um we're doing pretty poorly, which is why we're allocating fifty thousand dollars to support um social media over the next year. And at fifty thousand dollar resource, we purposely left it open at this point in time because we want to go out and um talk to some people and perhaps solicit um some input through bids on um how best we can a a attack a social media campaign. And and so we we left it purposely at a um sort of at a high level um of fifty thousand dollars right now to um enable us that flexibility as we learn more about how best to to do it. So social media, not so much. Advertising outside of the nar, we don't do a whole lot. We've tried a couple of things in the past. It could very well be that we're not that good at advertising. But the the one that I do remember didn't really pan out that much, and we didn't get much, if any, bang for the buck. I'd say, having said that, you know, we're for your two examples, we're not doing as as good as we potentially could. I think where we're really hitting home runs are we're we're very good at um collaborating with um a lot of our our vendor vendors and the the businesses that support the hobby. So so as best we can, um we certainly work with them to help promote the nar um when they sell products. We are um partnering with organizations like the Aerospace Industries Industries Association in doing um programs like um TARC and um NASA with the student launch program. And both of those programs, the nar gets very, very high visibility. RLS is another program that we participate in that Becky Green runs and again, the the nar is is prominent in that. So I think we're very good at partnering. And then the the last thing I'd say in in terms of getting out and promoting the hobby, you know, our launches are open. I can speak very um well with the the launches at our our local club um in Northern Virginia. And um, you know, we advertise through our webpage, a lot of word and word of mouth, but um, you know, we are the only facility in the region that does high power rocketry and and we do a tremendous number of TARC flights. We got scout troops, a lot of kids show up. Even in the coldest um times, last launch we had in in January, I couldn't last that long. It was just so cold. But um, we had we had lots of people out there and there were probably over a hundred cars that that came in throughout the day. So I think we're very good at um at the local level advertising and through our outreach activities. So um hopefully that answered your question. I don't know what this means. All right. All right. Any chance that Narcon twenty twenty three will be in person again? That'd be next year. Um, right now, we're thinking not um, we um we think that the the virtual does a a better job of reaching out across the board. I'm the the lone dissenter on or I I probably the most vocal anyways on on the board. I continue to push that um perhaps a a hybrid kind of model would be um serving good for our community in in terms of um the uh virtual versus in person. And and so um, but the the fact of the matter is, right now, doing a combined thing, the economics just aren't there and the technology wouldn't allow us the flexibility that we have with the platform like we're using now. So for the foreseeable future, I think we're gonna do Narcons as virtual and um we're gonna look at ways to enhance our other um uh meetings in um or or other national events and and increase the number of national events if we can to um get that face to face contact that that we like as well. So I'd love to be to do back in person and I I like in person kinds of meeting. Let's see, what exactly does a fifty K social media resource support supposed to buy? I think I answered that. From Charles, recommendation produced the hard copy guidebook for sale. We'll try to look at that, but my I'll look back if I'm wrong, but um I think the problem with doing um even a limited production of the hard copy book for sale is that the cost of doing it is such that it would be cost prohibitive. It we we would have the the upfront cost of printing something like that, especially in the color that we have now would be such that um it's just not affordable and it's such a small um print run that that becomes problematic. So any other questions? Let's see, can we, there's a checkbox that prevents others from seeing the questions. Oh. Does that help? I don't know what I I'm, a lot of them are coming in as private, so you may be coming in as it's sent privately um on your end. So uncheck that, but I'm I'm doing the best I can to to read the questions. I've answered everything in the inbox. Are there other questions that people have? Well, we can close up early and you get a half hour to do something. Um, oh, there, got one. Should we poll a sampling of the people who did not renew to find out why? Certainly, we can look into that. Okay, and I, all right, and I got that we can't uncheck this in privately on our end. Um, okay, I don't know. I I'm reading the question, so lots in the chat. All right, if you're in the chat and you want to have questions, you got to bring them over to the Q and A. I can't. I can try. Um, all right, I I'm I'm saying, all right, that somehow organizationally, we checked all of them as private. I apologize for that, but I am reading the questions. Oh, if I do this, does that make it better? I don't, I, sorry. So if you have a question in the chat, please bring it over. I'll certainly answer it. But the Raymond about the do a poll sampling the people who did not renew. I think we've done it in the past and um we can look into it again. I'm um and and we have the ability to survey people. Um we'll talk about it at the board and and see if there's a a good way to to do that. But I mean, typically what we found in the past is people for whatever reason have just gone um, grown tired of the hobby, things have changed and and um they've moved on. How much does Amazon Smile donate to the nar each year? I have a nar as my Amazon Smile charity. That was from Scott. Scott, that's um awesome. And I think we put it in E Rocketeer, but we'll publish that some more. Let me, I'll publish that in the E Rocketeer, how much we make. Sorry, um, but it it is um it is something that um, you know, we get several hundred dollars a year, I think, from Amazon Smile. I certainly do it. I've told others and um a lot of people just don't know, but if uh Amazon does have a a way that um a percent of your purchases get donated to to your favorite charity through Amazon Smile. So if you look up um Amazon Smile, Google it, and and then you log in, it's smile dot amazon dot com. And then um it it automatically does it. I've even got my wife um donating it for us. So, oh gosh, now we've got all these things going. Glad I just didn't give up. Okay, so at the sampling, oh, in this, in the um, the polling. Um, Mark Bundick said he's gonna jump into our previous surveys and and look it up and and let us know. Scott, I talked about Amazon Smile. Um, Alberta, how about a national flying site fund? I would say that's certainly a potential opportunity, but I my first pushback before I would solicit funds and um feel good about supporting something like that would be, we again have to make the business case and set up the um you know, what what are we looking for in in terms of um annual costs associated with a national flying site and and what the cost benefit is before we would solicit funding for that kind of restricted fund. So, uh, there you go. Ed says he fixed the private. Oh, yeah, they're not coming in private anymore. Or some of them are, I don't know. All right, so the sampling I got, Ed did that. Buzz McDermott, um, do you have any suggestions for additional organizations to approach locally? Um, National Space Society, Mars Society? Gosh, not Buzz, not right off the top of my head, but certainly, I think if um if you have other ideas, please um reach out and let me know. And uh, that's something um I will look at. And by that, um Buzz, I'm gonna interpret your ask on that is um in in terms of um setting up cooperative kinds of um not arrangements, but um just in terms of reaching out to try to bolster our membership. And and so um, and I think part of what we need to do is is our social media campaign is is to look at things like that as well. Okay. David Kane, can we get Excel events to implement some obvious or better if there's one that we can't find way for attendees to start direct chats with each other? Outside of meeting chats, also to have Excel work better notifying attendees that they have messages available. David will look into that. Um, we may be restricted, but perhaps what we need to do is um come up with um a maybe like a one page FAQ or a cheat sheet for our members on how best to use all the different um parts of Excel events would be something that we could provide in the future. Pat Fitzpatrick says, could you please tell the membership about the new finding aid for the G Harry Stein collection that they have fund? Okay, so the okay, so the the for the G Harry Stein collection, there is now available to the members to to people to use for finding out and and locating information that's in the G Harry Stein collection. And um Jeff Nun, I think is gonna talk a little bit about that today in his presentation. Also with that I I do so many things, but I'll make sure that that's also that we give another shout out to that and um point that out in our next um E Rocketeer as well as let me do bring up the fact that um, so with the Museum of Flight and supporting the curation of um and continued to finish up the curation of the Stein collection and potentially um additional collections from STs and the the piece or collection in the future. The board did vote to allocate um some funds that that go into a um a restricted account towards the Museum of Flight. And we'll just um accumulate that year over year until we find additional things to support at the museum that are are beneficial to both. And then um also um with um the Museum of Flight, if you would like to donate to um aid in the curation of um these important collections, if you go to the donate page on the nar website, there is actually a a button that you can donate and it'll flag it for the um the Museum of Flight collection. So let's see, also to be active part of any STEM program for any other organizations or is this best left to me? All right, so whoever whoever also had issue with the um the platform, the the bottom up part of it makes it hard too. So um the questions go from the bottom up and the chat goes from the top down. So it's it's not always intuitive for for the users on this end. Oh, and I can stop sharing this. It'll give you some bandwidth. To be an active part of any STEM program, uh, so this Buzz is clarifying it with other organizations. Again, Buzz, not off the top of my head. I don't have any additional things. I mean, certainly there are um, you know, locally reaching out to organizations like four H, um, the Civil Air Patrol, um, the Junior ROTC Programs, the Scouts, both Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. You know, I think I said four H, but any of these local programs certainly um doing that. And then um in in larger STEM activities, especially some of the the programs that um like SCS comes to mind that they're supporting. I mean, they're they're just much more suited to and have the 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 resources to help with programs like that, whereas we don't. I think um, you know, one of the things I'd like to do with respect to our education Whereas we don't, I think, you know, one of the things I'd like to do with respect to our educational program is, again, do kind of a brainstorming session with some different people to come out to get a sense, you know, what should our our educational program be and how can we best serve the education community based on, you know, considering the fact that there are other organizations that are doing things so that we're not duplicating everybody's efforts? So let me keep going. Again, I apologize that they're only private. I'd fix it, but I don't know how. Andrew Tomasz, Muncie is not close to us. I agree with that. And the Indianapolis Club flies there regularly. And Muncie in the AMA headquarters is, I'd say, as Andrew puts it, they're not rocket hostile. I'd say they're actually very open to our association. And Jay Marsh certainly is a great ambassador between the two organizations. But as well, we've had several, a number of interactions over the past, organizationally between, at my level and the board level, between the two groups. And I think there is a very good relationship in the R, and that does translate into the fact that local organizations can use that kind of thing in terms of their flying sites. So and quite honestly, in terms of flying sites, it's identifying those kind of organizations that we can dovetail into something that's complementary to their mission. Now, the example, another example I could give you is like with, locally with us, with NOVAR, we actually, we fly at an equestrian events outdoor recreation center. And we've been able to, over the long term, convince them that a rocketry is safe. We're not harming the property. We don't hurt the horses because there's horses there when we're there. But we're good stewards and, and good users of the property. And it's very much a symbiotic relationship between the two organizations. And so they allow us to launch and use that property. And it's setting up those kind of relationships that create long-term kind of good relationships with really good flying sites. So it's, it's hard work and that's what we need to do. Steve Crystal, please encourage everyone, who knows, a junior may be interested in the space modeling to drop me a note. Okay. So if you were born after January 1st, 2005, and Steve, help me out and give me another thing, there's an upper age cutoff. But if you're born after January 1st, 2005, but not over the age of X, you could participate in the World Space Modeling Championships, which will be in Texas in 2023. Steve Crystal on our board and his contact information is prominently on the contacts page of our website. Drop Steve a note, we're really trying hard to reach out to juniors. This could be a, an awesome experience to compete at the world level in space modeling. It's a little bit different than other NAR competition. If you just done it locally or at the national level within the US, I've done it in the past. It's, it's an awesome experience and reach out to Steve. Okay, Chad. Chad, can we have some significant cleanup of the NAR portion, at least of the certified motor list? Lots of motors way past out of cert date and even the grace period. And those that Bill Son had certified that never existed, this comes into a legitimate concern. As I'm thinking, there are a number of motors that are no longer complying with NFPA 1125. We don't want a negative view of the certification program. Thanks. Chad, I will talk to S and T about that. But as far as I know, we are compliant, we are working with the manufacturers and actually with the other certifying organizations for motors to continue to look at the most efficient and cost-effective way for the manufacturers to recertify and update certifications of motors. And as the motors get bigger, it just becomes a lot more expensive and and potentially problematic for a manufacturer to certify these big motors on a regular basis. So we're looking at ways that meet the needs. We, I, I can comfortably say that at the present time, we are, we think we're in compliance with NFPA 1125, but I'll reach out to S and T and confirm that for you. All right. Andy, we have a great, it's reinforcing that we have a great relationship with the AMA and Muncie. From Alexander, have you considered posting all sessions on YouTube after some grace period? NAR YouTube channels is light on content and the information shared during is great educational value. Alexander, as far as I know, that's our intent. And Ed or Todd could correct me if I'm wrong, but, and we did it last year. We posted everything up on our YouTube last year after the grace period and our intention is to do that again this year. But I do agree with you that our content is a little bit light on YouTube. Robert, users can reload the page and clear the same privately checkbox work for me? Yes, Robert, it did. So yes, if you reload your page, then it'll fix it. Okay. Todd, there's the toggle, yes, yes, if you uncheck it and then you may have to reload. Alexander, all of the virtual Narcon has been recorded and will be uploaded to the NAR YouTube channel 90 days. So, yes, I was right. Thanks, Robert. Steve, that's the cutoff to still be a junior in 2023. Anyone born after that, but what's the upper age, Steve, of a? Or am I getting this wrong? If you're born after that, you don't qualify. Steve, I'm confused and it may just be me and I haven't had enough coffee for the day. But certainly, if you think you're a junior and meet the requirements, then please contact Steve. And if you're too old to be in the junior team, we still need flyers that can beat out the the flyers on the senior team. So there are opportunities on both. And Chad said, but Red Runner. I don't know what you mean, Chad, sorry. All right, I think I'm caught up again. Last call. All right, Robert, what is the age range for a junior? Yeah. Red Runner motors are long gone. I will ask about them, but if they're on Tripoli's list, then they still, it still comes over. But I will ask Chad. From Thomas Fetter, are there currently any joint activities with Tripoli, especially regarding regulation of the hobby? For example, black powder usage? Yes, the, Thomas, we have a, actually a very, very good working relationship with with Tripoli, sorry, it jumped, if things jump as I read them. And I historically have met very regularly with the leadership of Tripoli as do some of our other key committee members. With the motor certification program, we actually work closely with Tripoli and the Canadian Association, who certifies the motors in Canada. And we meet on a regular basis to make sure that we're, our efforts are coordinated. And actually during a board meeting, we also talked about that, apparently, presently, Tripoli is taking a look at the safety code and may tweak it a little bit. And we're going to communicate with them and, you know, just make sure that we're aligning, trying to think, other things that we cooperate with, the motor testing on thrust curve where you, or the reporting of motor failures on thrust curve. We, we help coordinate that activity. And so the intent there was, if we can jointly come up with a way to look at problematic motors and something that's easy to use for the membership, then I get it, Steve, okay, sorry, if so, so we're trying to, with the motors, the mess reporting, it's something you can do on an app and make it a little bit easier to report as well as to look up any motors that you may be purchasing. So, so I'd say, yeah, there's a lot and we continue to work closely with Tripoli. I think the, the two organizations communicate very well together. And there's a very good back and forth relationship with, with both. Okay, James Duffy on the US team. So theoretically, we could have 32 seniors and 32 juniors. So in a perfect world, we would have one expert for each seat that we have for each of the the categories that, of the different classes that are being flown. So we could have a team of 64. And Steve, sorry, I'm being dense today. Now I totally understand what your message was. If you were born after January 1st, 2005, then you are eligible to be on the junior team. I was somehow flipping that in my mind. And like I said, I need more coffee. So anybody born after January 1st, 2005 is eligible to be on the junior team. And Chad just said you can't turn 20 and to be a junior, so we got that now. And Steve Loveliner, ah, so, yes, if you have old motors that are not on the certified list and this is model rocket motors only, not high-power motors, that if you contact Steve Loveliner, he can work with you to set up the process to allow you to fly those old, not currently certified, but previously certified motors. So all right, let me see if I got everything. So Robert, just to loop back, Robert Bell, Doc Nap, if you're from zero to age 19 and meet that January 1st, 2005 or younger or closer to now birthday, then you're eligible to be on the team. Yeah. Thanks, Steve. Yeah, doing real-time math while I'm reading a scrolling thing. Is it my, my forte, sorry. But, all right, any last questions? Be the auctioneer, going once, going twice. All right, well, thank you, everybody. If any additional questions pop in, then we'll try to preserve them and answer them as best we can offline. Thanks a lot to everybody for participating and for being your membership and being an attentive. If you have any other follow-up questions, feel free to reach out to me. And I hope you have a good rest of your day.